For all, may our actions continue to seek the genuine desire to support the growth and wellbeing of our students and our staff. Bless our schools, teachers, administrators, students, and their families over this summer season. We thank you for your dedication and commitment of each board member and ask for your strength and patience as we work together to fulfill our responsibilities. In your name, Reverend.
Good.
These are the leaders, these are special.
Bless these.
Neil and Lance, how are you?
It was gonna be a good part of, and I'm sure it's gonna be another morning win. So.
Convenient.
And it was very, very convenient, so.
No, Ron.
Ron wants to go.
We'll let Ron settle.
All right.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One honor, Texas, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and individual. Joshua ISD, really Godly Land Model, and the great United States.
What time. Thank you, Reverend. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good job, Reverend.
Oh, hell. Fuck you.
I was gonna say he dodged you, but that probably isn't appropriate.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna present to you the early childhood literacy and mathematics report. This plan, you can see from the dates, goes through 2019 through 2024. It came out of a legislative session, and the purpose of the plan is to just report over a five-year period of what our, how well early childhood literacy and mathematics students are doing in those grade levels. And so, the goal that was set by TEA was that at least 60% of all students meet the state standard, the MEAT standard, by third grade on STAR, whether it's the reading or the math. So we're gonna look at, at, all right, I'm sorry, at the literacy goal first. So our, the percent of third grade students that scores MEATs grade level or above on STAR reading will be at or above 60% by June of 2024. So you can kinda see how we've gone through the years, but last year, in the 2023-2024 school year, we met the target of 60%, so that was the five-year proficiency goal. The next section just breaks it down into our, some student groups there, and you can see here's 2024, the targets, new targets came out last year. So then, here's the targets on this line, and you can see in 2024, for each one of these groups, we exceeded the target in all groups except special education. Actually, we did get it in special education, sorry, that's just in this, it's in this color, it should be in green. So we met it all in third grade, so that's excellent that those students are at the MEATs level or above. And the next section of the report breaks it down into pre-kindergarten, kindergarten first and second grade, so you can see that in pre-kindergarten, our goal was that 70% of our students would be on track, and so actually, we were 84% there. In kindergarten, same goal, 70% of the students are on track in literacy, so 86% were on track there. First grade, we fell short of the goal a little bit, by 60, we were at 65%, and the goal was 70. And second grade, we were at 60%, and the goal was 70. But you can see, we made increases through the year, little, and some dips here and there, but by third grade, they have met that goal. The next section is the early childhood mathematics, so again, in third grade, we want those students to be at 60% or better. We were at, at the end of last year, we were at 55%, of our students were at MEATs, so we were 5% short there, and that does fall in line with what we saw across the state as I've shared some of those scores with you in mathematics. Then we have our, the close and the gap section where we have the student groups again, and so on the very bottom line, you can see that every one of our student groups met the target except for our white students, we were, the goal was 62%, and we were at 60%. Then in pre-kindergarten, at 80, we were at 85%, the goal was 70, so we met that long-term target, same thing in kindergarten. In first grade, we met the target also, second grade, we met the target in mathematics. The next section is the Spanish section, so these are our third grade students who take the Spanish STAR, so we did not meet our long-term target there. This is a continued area to, that our teachers and administrators look at because they're trying to make those decisions whether those students are testing in English or are they testing in Spanish. So we're not talking about a large number of students because our students, the whole goal of our vulnerable program is that the students transition into English. And so we also have the targets here that we did not meet the close and the gap targets in those groups. In pre-kindergarten, our students were at 71%, and the goal was 70. In kindergarten, they did meet the target, we were at 80%, so we were above the 70% goal. And in first grade, we met the target, and second grade, we met the target. So you can see as we're meeting in the younger grades, and then by third grade, when we did not meet the target, it is because many of these students have transitioned into taking the English exam and are not taking it in Spanish. And with that, so, is there any questions on this public hearing? Thank you.
I got a question. Thank you, Reverend.
All right, in our, for a workshop, review child nutrition report, property tax collection, monthly financial reports, monthly and year-to-date status of special revenue funds, the check rest our complete department report, and our calendar events.
Okay. Brings her up to everything, before we have to talk to, to speak. Anybody sign up? Nobody signed up? Okay, we'll move on. Subjects. Subject A, consent presented, agenda items.
Okay, so in our workshop, we discussed the previous meetings due 17 through 2024, July 1st through 2024, no budget amendments and no purchases over $2,000 at this time, recommendation would be to approve the consent items as discussed.
I make a motion, we approve the consent items as discussed.
Motion by Mr. Pruitt, there, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson, any further discussion or questions? All in favor? For.
Subject B. Consider resolution to sanction Johnson County 4-H organization as an extracurricular activity for 2024-2025.
Okay, so this is the resolution that we approve every year, and this allows that Johnson County 4-H to be considered an extracurricular activities, my recommendation would be to approve the resolution to sanction Johnson County 4-H as an extracurricular activity for 2024-2025 school year.
Motion.
I make a motion, we approve subject B as presented.
Motion by Mr. Wilson, second by Mr. Pruitt. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor? For. Subject C. Consider faculty agreement with Johnson County 4-H organization for '24-25.
Okay, so in conjunction with that resolution, we would then need to consider the adjunct faculty agreement with Johnson County 4-H organization, and so my recommendation would be to approve the adjunct faculty agreement with Johnson County 4-H organization for '24-25 school year.
Any further motion?
I'll make a motion to approve subject C as stated.
Motion by Mr. Watson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pruitt, any further discussion or questions? All in favor? For. Subject D, consider endorsement of TASM board members for region 11.
Okay, so we've discussed this in our workshop, there's only one person, or one position that is up for the TASM board directors for election this year, that's the regional 11 position D, and there's only one candidate nominated for position D, and that candidate is Steve Newcomb from Eagle Valley, SAG and IISD, and so my recommendation would be to endorse Steve Newcomb for position D, regional position D.
I make a motion, we approve Steve Newcomb for position D.
Motion by Mr. Pruitt, there, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson, any further discussion or questions? All in favor? For. Subject E, consider 2024-2025 professional development.
Okay, so policy DMA local and Senate Bill 12, or 1267 requires you guys as trustees to annually review the professional development clearinghouse published by the state for educator certification, annually approve a professional development plan for the district. Our district's plan does not have any differences from the recommendations listed in the clearinghouse, so my recommendation would be to approve the JST '24-25 professional development plan.
Any further motion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wilson, there, second. Second by Mr. Watson, any further discussion or questions? All in favor? For. Have considered approving memorandum of understanding between the Texas Higher Education Coordinated Board, Joshua ISD.
Okay, so the Texas Higher Education Coordinated Board is establishing new agreements with each ISD to allow counselors and district counselors to access the new applied Texas counselor suite, so my recommendation would be to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Texas Higher Education Coordinated Board and Joshua ISD.
Any further motion?
I'll make a motion to approve subject F as stated.
Motion by Mr. Watson, there, second.
Second.
Okay, by Mr. Pruitt, any further discussion or questions? All in favor? For. Subject G, consider memorandum of understanding between Joshua ISD Police Department and the Joshua Police Department.
Okay, so this is our memorandum of understandings with each law enforcement agency that overlaps jurisdictions, that outlines reasonable communication and coordination efforts among departments and their agencies, and this is required per policy CKE legal, and so this is the first one with Joshua Police Department, so my recommendation would be to approve the memorandum of understanding with Joshua Police Department, and this is for three years going forward.
I make a motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding with Joshua Police Department.
Motion by Mr. Wilson, there, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Watson, any further discussion or questions? All in favor? For. Subject H, consider memorandum of understanding between Joshua ISD Police Department and the Keene Police Department.
Okay, same thing that we just discussed, as required by policy CKE legal, we would need to approve this memorandum of understanding, and so my recommendation would be to approve the memorandum of, of, memorandum of understanding with Joshua Police Department.
Any further motion?
I make a motion, we approve the memorandum of understanding with Joshua Police Department.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wilson, second by Mr. Pruitt, any further discussion or questions? All in favor? For. Subject I, consider memorandum of understanding between Joshua ISD Police Department and the Keene Police Department.
All right, so this is another overlapping jurisdiction here, department-wise, and so my recommendation would be to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Keene Police Department.
Any further motion? I'll make a motion to approve subject J as stated.
Aye. Aye. Second.
Motion by Mr. Watson, second by Mr. Pruitt, subject I. All in favor? For. Subject J, consider memorandum of understanding between Joshua ISD Police Department and the Keene Police Department.
As previously stated, my required JST policy CKE legal requires us to have the memorandum of understanding with each law enforcement that overlaps jurisdictions, and my recommendation would be to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Keene Police Department.
Any further motion?
I make a motion, we approve the memorandum of understanding with Joshua Police Department.
Motion by Mr. Wilson, there, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson, any further discussion or questions? All in favor? For. Subject K, consider memorandum of understanding between Joshua ISD Police Department, Johnson County, Johnson County Sheriff's Office.
Okay, so this is the last law enforcement agency here, and so my recommendation would be to approve the memorandum of understanding with Johnson County, Johnson County Sheriff's Office.
Any further motion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wilson, there, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Watson, any further discussion or questions? All in favor? For. Subject F, Police Department. Consider TAS being updated 1/23 affecting local policies.
Okay, so Mr. Cox reviewed this during our budget workshop, and these are minor tweaks within these policies listed right here, and so my recommendation would be to approve the revisions to the JST local policies as recommended in F A 12.
Any further motion? I'll make a motion to approve subject L.
Motion by Mr. Watson, there, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson, any further discussion or questions? All in favor? For. Subject M, consider order authorizing the issuance of Joshua Independent School District Unlimited Tax School Building Bond Series 2024.
Okay, so this is the approval and order authorizing the issuance of Joshua ISD Tax School Building Bond Series 2024. Mr. John Martin presented the information in regards to this during our budget workshop, he works for Hilltop Securities, and this would allow us to then be able to have that sale in August for our bonds. And so my recommendation would approve the order authorizing the issuance of Joshua ISD School District Unlimited Tax School Building Bond Series 2024.
I make a motion that we approve the order authorizing, authorizing the issuance of the Joshua Independent School District Unlimited Tax School Building Bond Series 2024.
Any further questions? Motion by Mr. Pruitt, there, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Watson, any further discussion or questions? That's saying a prayer, though we don't have a record. Any further questions or questions? All in favor? For. Subject M, consider special call board meeting.
Yes, I'm sorry, the 2024 budget workshop will be held on Wednesday, July 31st at 5:30, and then the public hearing, the school, school board, special board will be to adopt the 2024-2025 tax rates, and school budget will be held on Monday, the 26th at 2024, or at 5:30, excuse me. And then the school board tier three five-hour training provided by the Regent Center will be on Wednesday, September 11th, 2024 at 5:30. In addition to the team of eight training provided by Lisa Krass on Wednesday, October 9th at 5:30 P.M., Joshua ISD administration building, so my recommendation would be to approve the special call board meetings on July 31st, August 26th, September 11th, and October 9th.
I make a motion, we approve special call board meetings on July 31st, 2024, August 26th, 2024, September 1st, 2024, and October 9th, 2024.
There, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pruitt, any further discussion or questions? Are you sure you don't have an argument?
I don't, too.
All in favor? For. Subject G, consider revision to the 23-24 compensation plan.
Okay, so our proposed revisions to the 23-24 compensation plan will be include writing, or adding the RISE section for our RISE instructors, as well as adjusting the count's payable secondary from clerical pay grade seven to clerical pay grade five, and so my recommendation would be to approve the revisions to the 23-24 compensation plan.
Any further motion?
I make a motion, we approve the revisions to the 23-24 compensation plan.
There, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Watson, any further discussion or questions? All in favor? For. Anything else? This is my time for the meeting, a closed session, discuss item 55, protect the school meetings, act, and come six, five, one, point zero zero one through five, five, one, point
session at seven forty five. Mr. Hickerson, you got your recognition?
Yeah, so in our session we looked at our professional staff's residences. And so we have a piece of property that is designated as twenty seven eighty four Southwest Wilshire Boulevard, Joshua, Texas seven six oh five eight via special warranty deed. There that's being supplied from us from the Mountain Valley Joint Venture. This is the same group that donated the land at a previous meeting is donating this piece of property. And so my recommendation is that we accept this, consider accepting this donation alone.
How big is it?
I can't, uh, attend to it. Please do.
Clear board.
Yeah. That's good. I make a motion that we consider accepting the donation of the land. Sorry.
Motion by group to accept the donation. What group?
Mountain Valley Joint Venture.
Mountain Valley Joint Venture.
About ten all fours.
Okay, all clear. Any here second?
Second.
Second, Mountain Valley. Any closing discussion? All quiet. All favor? For all? Anything else? Any here voting to adjourn?
I make a motion when you adjourn.
Motion by group to here second?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Watson. All favor? For all. Second, forty six.